When a manager looks for an employee, you look for someone hopefully that has integrity, someone who's a hard worker, they have an excellent work ethic, they get along well with others because we don't like office drama, they're generous, rarely do you find all of those things, but we found all of those things in Diane Cannon. Her daily responsibilities, or probably one of the toughest jobs in our office is to, she's at the front counter, so she greets, she's the one that greets the public, she's the one that takes the phone calls, she's the one that gets the angry clients who are upset over their case, she's the one that diffuses the situation, she's the one that manages the initial paperwork that brings people into our office, taking the application, following that to other employees, she goes far and above to do the job that is required of her.
I have known Diane for many years, she used to work in Cobb County where I was first introduced to her, and she was a blessing there as she is here. The people that are coming in that office are charged obviously with criminal acts, and I can assure you when they walk out of that office, either they want to give Ms. Diane a hug, or Ms. Diane has already given them a hug.
She is that person every day, like I said, it does not matter who you are. Obviously, she is stellar in her particular job, as I've been in the office, I've had a chance to watch her at the front desk, obviously, it is not a fun job to have, you're talking to folks who are dealing with some of the worst times in their lives, so to be that forward-facing in that kind of office is difficult, and I very much appreciate that. She is always thinking about how to make things better, and that's what makes her such a great, wonderful human being, and such an asset to the entire state court team.
We're on Old Castle Road at Forrester Road, the site of our new fire station that's about to be underway on construction. This station took up several fire stations' territories to give us a little relief on responses. It will go over to Dallas-Aquworth Highway area, it will go down to 61 North, and it'll go over all the way to the industrial park and part of Gullidge Road back towards Seven Hill, so it's going to cover a lot of territory. There's a little over 4,500 residents, a lot of development still going on in the county, so we're trying to get ahead of the game a little bit here, we've been planning this for a while, but we expect a lot more growth out here, so we're trying to get this station built, get that going. I would compare this one to Station 12, which was the last one we built, it's just west of Dallas, it's the same floor plan, we liked it, it's functional, it's good and serviceable for the firefighters, but we are putting a battalion chief here, so we did expand that a little bit for a battalion chief office. We'll have one engine company here, and there'll be three firefighters assigned here per shift, which are 24-hour shifts, this station will be open 24 hours, 365/7. Right now, they're calling for completion to be January the 10th, which is not too far away, January 10th of 2025.
Thank you for allowing us in your community, to be able to serve in your community, we know it's been a long time coming, we want to give you a little break on your insurance rates for some of you with ISO ratings, so we're looking forward to doing that, and of course, if you need us, we're going to be there.
I started with Paulding County Elections in 1998, it's just a part of my civic duty, responsibility, and it's a privilege that I have as being a United States citizen.
Welcome to Veterans Memorial Park, located on the Watson Government Complex here in Paulding County, Georgia.
Our serene amphitheater and peaceful walking trail provide a tranquil space for reflection and gratitude. Within the park, you'll find monuments paying tribute to the heroes of Paulding County who sacrificed their lives in service, as well as those who perished in the 9/11 attacks. Children can enjoy laughter and play on our well-equipped playground, while visitors can stroll along the scenic half-mile trail, surrounded by the beauty of nature. For more information or to plan your visit, please call the Parks Administration Office at 770-445-8065. Veterans Park, a place of honor, remembrance, and gratitude for our nation's heroes.
Welcome to Mulberry Rock Park, located on the south side of Paulding County, Georgia. This park offers scenic walking trails, a great playground for children to enjoy, multipurpose fields, and plenty of outdoor recreational activities.
With amenities like our enclosed pavilion, multipurpose fields, and three miles of scenic pedestrian trails, Mulberry Rock Park provides the perfect backdrop for your outdoor adventures. Explore our community garden, let the kids unleash their imagination at the playground, or gather with friends and family at one of our five group pavilions for a memorable day in nature. Embrace the tranquility of Mulberry Rock Park as you stroll along the pedestrian trails or enjoy a picnic at one of our single-table shelters. For more information or to plan your visit, please call the Parks Administration Office at 770-445-8065. Mulberry Rock Park, where every moment is an opportunity to connect with nature and create cherished memories.
Here's the latest information about our TNVR program. This program was passed by the Paulding County Board of Commissioners in May of 2018. Since we started, there have been over 1,500 cats that have gone through the program. We are excited to say that we are ramping up the program even further on the second half of 2021. TNVR stands for Trap, Neuter, Vaccinate, and Release. It's a program to assist in stabilizing the population of community cats. These are the unowned, roaming cats that are not socialized. By fixing these cats and returning them to their caretaker, it allows them to continue to live out their lives and work in their community. It also minimizes nuisance behaviors like spraying, fighting, howling, and roaming. These cats are ear-tipped, so citizens know who has already gone through the program. By altering these cats, it will stabilize the population and reduce the number of unwanted litters of kittens. Community cats are also a great resource for organic pest control in the communities they live in. It is important to return these cats to their colonies because it is all they know. If you find a litter of young kittens, or a single young kitten, we know the first instinct for most people is to just scoop them up. To give kittens the best chance of survival, follow a few steps. Step one, leave the kittens alone and observe them from a distance. If the kittens seem content, there's a good chance mom is coming back. Step two, if the kittens are in a dangerous spot, please move them so mom can find them nearby. Step three, if the kittens appear dirty, meowing, underweight, contact a local community cat program, they can advise whether or not it is necessary to intervene. Step four, if you spot mom, leave the kittens alone. Once they are at least two pounds, humanely trap the whole family and have them spayed or neutered. Despite our best efforts at returning each cat to their original location, sometimes it is not safe to do so. In those cases, we turn to the community for alternative homes. These alternative homes provide a safe place for the cats to live, and the property owners receive free pest control. Those with barns, warehouses, feed stores, and workshops would benefit greatly from having a working cat. Community involvement is essential for program success. We are in great need of volunteers to assist with trapping and transporting to and from vet appointments. Please inquire today. Through TNVR, you can stabilize the population humanely, improve the cats' lives, save taxpayer dollars, address neighbors' concerns, and help the entire community reach a solution that benefits everyone. According to the ASPCA, TNVR has become the only proven humane alternative to mass euthanasia for unsocialized cats. We have several new vet partners in the works. This is very exciting, and we'll have additional information coming soon. We at Paulding County Animal Control look forward to working with the citizens of Paulding County to trap, neuter, vaccinate, and release the community's cats.
Today couldn't have turned out any better. This is our 21st year of hosting this event. All of our vendors showed up, we have great representation from throughout the county, local businesses, and we have some new vendors from outside of the county who wanted to be a part of the event. The weather's been nice, and we have one of the largest turnouts that we've ever had, so today's been a great success. Just want to give a huge thank you to all of our vendors, all of our public safety people that came out, we have great representation today from public safety, our county departments, really the public for coming out today and spending a little time with us. This is our largest event of the spring, and the rest of our county staff that has volunteered to come out today and help us out.
Welcome to Larry C. Ragstow White Oak Park, located in Paulding County, Georgia. This park features several tranquil lakes, vibrant playgrounds, and plenty of recreational activities, including a walking trail for everyone to enjoy.
From tranquil lakes to vibrant playgrounds, our park offers a plethora of amenities for you and your family to enjoy. Whether you're seeking adventure on our disc golf course, basking in the sun at our sand volleyball court, or simply taking a leisurely stroll along our walking trails, there is something here for everyone. For more information or to plan your visit, please call the Parks Administration Office at 770-445-8065. Larry C. Ragstow White Oak Park, where memories are made and nature thrives.
If you will, if you have any phones, any kind of audible devices, turn them off or silence them. There are rooms that would go by in the meetings, and they're on the back table back there, if you would like to see them and remember yourself with them. First order of business is the minutes from the last meeting, if everybody get a chance to see them and read them. Okay, is there a motion on the adoption of those minutes?
So moved.
Mr. Austin made the motion to approve those minutes. Do it here, second.
Second.
I think Mr. Steele beat you there, cameraman. All in favor? I'll break the vote since it was brothers four, it's going to be four, zero, and two because Mr. Wick's wasn't here at the last meeting, and he wanted to abstain on it, so it'll be four, zero, and two. Mr. Robertson, do you have any announcements?
Good afternoon, actually, yes, I do, and thank you, commission members. The following applications have been moved to the next month or pending the next month, September, just depending on different actions, different reviews, and necessary information for each different applications there. The applications are 2416Z, 2405SUP, both of those are Sharon and Leroy Gordon. Application 2426Z, and 2411SUP, this application by Stephanie Mann. Applications 2403Z, 2402SUP, this is applications by Northwest Georgia Land Holdings, that is the application that was for quarry, proposed quarry. Applications 2421Z, James &amp; Beverly Aldridge, and 2424Z, Bremen Ventures, those applications are needing a little bit more staff review and some additional fees. Those would, wanted to make those announcements.
Okay, do you have the first one for today?
I do. First application is 2425Z, it's City of Hiram, application by Ajit M. Patel, requesting to rezone 2.66 acres from B2 Highway Business District to I-1 Light Industrial for development of a two-story self-storage facility accompanied by impervious drive, customer parking, RV/boat parks, and a stormwater detention pond or facility. Property is located in Landlots 544, District 2, Section 3, it's on the north, it's located at the northwest intersection of Pace Court and Pace Road, it's in Commission Post 3, as well as the City of Hiram. Staff has recommended denial of this application, and after analysis, and if the board chooses, or the planning commission and city council decides to approve this application, there's three recommended stipulations, that's printed in for review.
Is the applicant present? Is the applicant present?
Mr. Chair, in the absence of the applicant being here, I would recommend one of two things, either you continue it to the next meeting, or you dismiss it without prejudice. The applicant is required to be present.
What is the feeling of the board? Do I have a motion to table it or to deny?
I feel like with the applicant not showing, I'll make a motion to deny.
It would be dismissal without prejudice.
Correction, I make a motion for dismissal without prejudice.
And your second?
My second.
Okay. Mr. Wick, let's see, Mr. Steele made a motion to dismiss without prejudice, seconded by Mr. Wick's.
May I ask one question of staff?
Sure.
Was there any attempt by the applicant to let us know he wasn't going to be here?
There was no notification from the applicant at this time.
Well, I have a motion to deny. All in favor, raise your hand. All right, it'd be five, zero, and one on denial. Without prejudice, that's right.
Next application is 2427Z, application by Serenity Partners, Seven Hills LLC, Ted Paris, requesting to rezone 30.399 acres from R2 Suburban Residential District to R55 Active Adult Residential District. This would be for Phase 3 construction of 45 single-family residential homes in the existing Serenity Community, which is act age-restricted development. Property is located in Landlot 769, District 3, Section 3. It's on the east side of Seven Hills Boulevard. It's in Commission Post 4. Staff has recommended approval with five printed stipulations. We did receive an email correspondence from adjoining property owner with concerns and opposition, and I believe the applicant's representative is here.
Is the applicant step forward, sir, sign in to the, on the, right there beside you, yes. State your name and present your case. And what you will be doing is you will be talking, you will be presenting it to me, and there will be questions from this board. You have 15 minutes to present your case, and if there's anyone against your case, they have 15 minutes, but present your case to me and you're ready to go.
Yes, sir. My name is Will Summy. I'm with Lead Engineering, and we're representing Serenity Partners LLC in this rezoning. As Chris stated, it is for 45 additional lots in what would become Phase 3 of an already permitted development. And we are seeking approval from this board as we have received the recommendation from staff. Our client has read through the five listed zoning stipulations and is amenable to all five, and I'd like to reserve the remainder of my time for any questions from the board or for any rebuttal.
Does anyone from the board have questions for the applicant? No questions. Okay, sir, if you'll sit, and we'll give someone else a chance to talk on your behalf. Is there anyone else that wants to talk in favor of this application? That's in favor of this application? Seeing none, is there anyone here that wants to talk against or has questions or concerns about this application? Come forward, sir. Sign your name on the sheet there to your right and state your name.
My name is Mitchell Cochran. I live right next door to where they're doing all the building. I'm at 2901 Seven Hills Boulevard. And originally, I was talking to a developer when they was developing the land, and they said that the front, they was going to put the 55 and adult community housing in, but in the back, they was breaking off either five to seven acre estate homes that were originally going to go in there. And I just had found out about them wanting to put the 45 homes in there. And right now, the traffic on Seven Hills Boulevard is terrible. I don't know if y'all know about that or not. And they can't even get the roads fixed fast enough, yet they're building all these homes. I've had my mailbox knocked over twice, my car's flipping over around the curb. I'm right there around the curb, right down from Ivy Gullage, where it meets. But anyway, they're building right beside us, and my complaint was how did they, how they're able to put 45 more single homes, that's 90 cars, because most people's got wife and husband that has a car and then whatever, could be more for their kids. Now we've got 90 more vehicles on the road, and right now, we're not being sustained. We're having to sit in a line mile and a half back just to go get on Cedar Crest. Then, of course, nobody wants to go the other way out, you know, toward 381, and you sure don't want to go down toward Mars Hill or nothing like that. But the traffic is awful. And they're building all these houses, they build subdivisions, and the houses that they're building, my house, I got like 13-point acres right there, and I got a nice home and everything, but I'm afraid of the value in my home, what they're trying to do right here, and putting all this house, 45 more houses in. Because they've already tore up a bunch of land, but the main thing is the traffic. The roads are not ready, and the traffic is terrible. People are flying up and down the road. Like I said, there've been multiple accidents. I mean, you can check with the Paulding County Sheriff's Department. I mean, all the time, we got people walking up and down the road. We never had that before. We lived there since this Grant's Chapel Road. We lived there when there was no Seven Hills development whatsoever, and it was pretty nice. And, but now, it's turning terrible, and all these builders want to come in and put these houses up. And like I said, it was supposed, my understanding, it was supposed to be five to seven acre estate lots, and now they're putting these homes in. And that's my complaint. What's happening? Because I think we're really getting overbuilt right there in that one area, and the roads are not sustaining it whatsoever. I mean, you can't even get your kids to school on time or nothing. You gotta leave at 6 o'clock in the morning to get there to get your kids to school on time. So I don't know why they're keep developing that one road. You know, it's both sides, and then it's a lot, I guess it's a lot of companies that are building houses and they're all for rent. You know, I don't know where these guys are from, but evidently, they got a lot of money. But, you know, I thought we were supposed to watch out for the land and stuff. I mean, at one time, they offered me a grant for my taxes to be cheaper if I agreed to, you know, decide for 10 years, to stay there for 10 years. And now, you know, my God, I'm getting ready to move or something. I said, this is crazy. I said, there's way too much traffic. But these builders keep coming right here. I don't know why they're picking that area bill, but the houses that they're building are in the 300s. And it seems, it just seems like, you know, my part of my home and everything is going to be divested. How am I going, if I was to ever sell it, however, ever sell it? You know, and that's the main thing I'm worried about, because initially, I was told it's going to be five to seven acre estate lots with real nice homes on it. And I said, I could handle that. But now, we've got all this, and all these builders building these homes, you know, which it looks ugly. You go by down there at Serenity Partners, it just, it looks terrible right there. They, you know, I don't know what they're planning on doing as far as making that outside look good. The entranceway looks great, but on both sides, it's terrible. And I ain't got nothing against nobody, but I think they're pushing the building too much and not got the roads ready for it. And plus, the devaluing of the people around there. And that's my major complaint.
I understand. Does anyone on the board have questions that you will present to this gentleman? Seeing none, thank you, sir. You may take your seat. Is there anyone else that wants to speak against this zoning? Hearing none, sir, would you come back up and? This gentleman mentioned, you've heard the five to seven acres that were proposed in the original zoning of this property. Do you know anything about that? Is that something that?
As far as original intent for that lot, there was nothing shown in the original zoning for Phases 1 and 2 of the Serenity Development. What the gentleman may have been told by the developer at that time, I cannot speak to, but at this point in time, the land was never split into multiple parcels. It has remained this 30 acres contingent, and the developer decided to go this path of seeking an R55 to continue Phase 3. Also, I can't speak to road improvements in the area. I would defer to Paulding County DOT in that regard, but I would point to stipulation four that our client's amenable to would require a contribution of $1,500 that would go towards off-site roadway improvements. And also, there will be a 50-foot undisturbed buffer around the whole property that you can see on the plan for all the adjacent parcels. So there would be a buffer between any new buildings and the adjacent owners.
Mr. Robson, do you, do you have anything as far as any updates on this?
I was going to get you to turn your mic on.
Oh, it is on.
Okay.
It's on.
Now, go ahead and answer that question. This case did come in in 2021 to rezone the front portion to R55. That was under a prior R55 district that allowed a smaller lot size. The property in back, I think there might have been some discussions back in '21 that there might just leave that as estates in the back. This application, they're requesting to make this a third phase. This phase would have to meet the current standards, which would push the lot, minimal lot size to 8,000 square feet.
And this third phase does meet the comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Can we ask Mr. Jones a question as well? DOT, can you explain so the gentleman that objected will understand what the $1,500 is going to and what improvements it may be used for?
Right now, there's a project to improve Seven Hills Boulevard going from the end of the current divided highway on Seven Hills back through Gullage Road intersection, back on to towards the old Carter'sville section. So realign that, that intersection and improve Seven Hills Boulevard to a divided two main roadway median curb improvements to satisfy 35 mile per hour speed design that's in the pre-construction phase right now. Thank you.
I have a question for the applicant's representative. Would this already be in an R2-zoned parcel? With you seeking an R55, if it is denied, is that something moving forward with additional R2? Would that be something that developer is going to be interested in or pursuing to develop the remainder of the property as an R2, which it is already currently zoned?
Currently, I do not know the developer's plan, should it remain R2. At this point, they decided that made the most sense to conform to this R55 and match with the rest of the property as it would put the whole land in contingent. Currently, it's a landlocked parcel without it, so you would have an R2 zoning and those type of developments that would then have to feed through an R55. So they feel that it makes the most sense to make the whole contingent piece R55, so that way, you don't have mixed uses going through the roadway.
What is your total acreage on this parcel?
The total acreage on this additional parcel is 30.4 acres.
Okay, so if it stayed R2, you may have more units, which I think is where Mr. Wick's is going. You may have more units in R2 than you have in R55.
That's exactly right.
And it would open it up also to it being students, R55.
So, kind of to speak to the gentleman's comments and concerns, the parcel is already zoned R2, so it's already primed and ready for potentially development, as long as it went through plan review process and everything met out. So right now, they're seeking a rezoning of an R55 that could actually reduce the strain on some of our infrastructure, like our schools. But that's why I was curious with the fact that it's already an R2. It's not like an A1 agricultural area trying to go to an R2 or an R3 or an R55. It is currently already R2, so theoretically, the developer could proceed with an R2 development.
That's correct.
Are there any other questions?
Do we need a, Mr. Jones, do we need a traffic study on this, or do we have a recent traffic impact study in that area?
We have recent counts in that area. Typically, we've worked in with community development and the Board of Commissioners. We've adopted a policy regarding when traffic, I wouldn't say it's a policy, but criteria is a better word, for these type of developments. You're looking at, for residential developments, you're looking at probably more than 50 vehicles per hour, which is roughly 50 homes in the peak hour to trigger that type of development. Knowing what's going on out here, I didn't feel that that was necessary at this point in time, especially with the previous portion of this being development, of this being developed. But there's also criteria we're looking at for commercial and industrial.
Any other questions? And you're familiar with the five zoning stipulations you agreed to?
Yes, sir. Client is amenable.
Thank you. All right. Do we have a motion on this if there are no other questions?
I make a motion to approve with all five listed stipulations.
Motion is to approve with all five listed stipulations. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Wick, second by Mr. Callahan. All in favor? Be five, zero, and one. Approves. Mr. Robson.
Okay. Final application for this afternoon is back in Hiram, 2024-28Z, City of Hiram. Application by Grand Communities LLC requesting to rezone 31.5 acres from R2 Suburban Residential District and B2 Highway Business District to R55 Active Adult Residential District for the proposed development of 117 single-family attached residential homes. Property is located in Landlots 388, 403, and 404, District 2, Section 3. It's on the north side of Atlanta Highway, which is State Route 6, and at Village Drive. It's located within the city limits of Hiram. It's also in Commission Post 3. Staff has recommended denial on this one, but added four stipulations if the planning commission and city council chooses to approve.
This is a zoning that will be heard by this board, but the actual final vote will be on what date in Hiram. Are you familiar?
They will schedule their own public hearing, and so it would be a future date with the city council.
So is the applicant in the audience?
Yes.
If you'll come to the podium, sign in, state your name.
Good afternoon. Thank you. My name is Jason Wazneski. I am with Grand Communities. I am here on behalf of Hillary Laffine, who is the actual applicant. Fortunately, unfortunately, she is. she is on maternity leave or about to be, so she couldn't travel, so I'm here in her stead. So I'm here to present or answer any questions. So, do I have 15 minutes? Or is that similar to the previous?
Yeah, you've got 15 minutes to present to us what you want.
Sure. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate your time. I don't have any formal presentation today. I do, I believe you have the staff report. I will tell you a little bit about Fisher Homes, about who we are. Grand Communities is a land development company for Fisher Homes. We're the affiliated land development company. We've been active here in Atlanta for about a decade now. We've been, we were formed in 1980, so we've been around for over 44 years at this point in time, based out of Cincinnati, Ohio, but we're active in nine markets, including Atlanta, and we are a top 30 builder, privately owned and operated by the Fisher family. I will briefly go through the site plan, but what I want to spend the majority of my time on is addressing some of the staff comments and then answering any questions that you all may have about the plan or the proposal. So we are proposing to rezone about 32 acres from commercial to R-55. There's a small portion, about an acre and a half-ish, that on Charles Hardy Parkway that will remain under the existing zoning, commercial zoning. On the remainder of the property, we are proposing 117 attached dwelling units. Those are in three and four unit configurations. Those are a one-story product, although we do offer a bonus room, a second story. There's a variance request in there for that second story, and that's optional. That's something that we let our buyers choose. However, just for clarification, if one buyer in a building, in a three-unit or a four-unit building selects that loft, they all have to be lofts, otherwise you would have kind of like an odd roofline configuration. So, once somebody chooses it in a building, all of that building will also have that second story. All roads, so our main access point is here. I don't know if you can see the cursor or not, but it comes off of Village Boulevard, off the roundabout. There's an existing curb cut that was planned to access this property off of Village Boulevard. That road comes in. The roads and utilities for the development are private, internal to the community. Will all be privately owned and maintained by an HOA that we will establish. We establish HOAs for all of our communities. In addition to the 117 units, we also have an amenity center located right here at the first intersection, kind of at that prominent point as you come into the community. There would be a clubhouse there with, right now, we're finalizing what kind of program we would want in that area, but pickleball courts, bocce courts, cornhole, those kinds of things are typically what we would put at an amenity. Given that this is targeted, it's age restricted, so our market is 55 and older, this is not going to have playgrounds or tot lots or that kind of thing, or at least that's not something that we would plan for. The main access, again, off of the existing roundabout at Village Boulevard. We did plan for an emergency access out onto Atlanta Highway, just in case something were to happen that there would be a second access available. There are renderings of the product in your packets. I'm not going to go through that information. I'm happy to answer any questions about it, though. What I wanted to spend the, kind of the rest of my time talking about is the staff comments. I believe there were six of them. Comment A, there's no real comment. It was just staff going through the adjacent zoning that surrounds the development. Comment B was, in the staff's opinion, or is staff's opinion, the rezoning may permit a use that is suitable in view of the use and development of adjacent and nearby parcels. Adjacent nearby properties include a mix of commercial and single-family residential uses. So, there are some residential, or commercial uses out on Charles Hardy Parkway and Atlanta Highway, but to the east and to the north are predominantly residential. They are also attached. A lot of it is attached. There are some single-family detached to the north and to the east as well, but it is a residential use that is compatible with what's happening to the north and to the east. Comment C was that, in the staff's opinion, the applicant's rezoning proposal may have an adverse effect on the usability of adjacent or nearby parcels. Increased traffic on Village Boulevard could impact adjacent properties. So, at some point, I would like to get staff's opinion or clarification on what those adverse effects may be. I don't, it's a vague statement, but I would like to know what those adverse effects may be, so that we would have some ability to address them in some way, shape, or form. Now, there will be increased traffic on Village Boulevard. That's just going to happen. Regardless of what use there is, but that connection is there. Again, even in a commercial situation, if it connected to Village Boulevard, there would be increased traffic. However, the traffic that comes with the residential is going to be less than what comes with the commercial uses, and obviously Village Boulevard, having the roundabout, having that stub into the proposed property, it was planned for, right? They wouldn't put a stub into this property if they weren't planning to have additional traffic coming on to Village Boulevard. So, yes, there will be increased traffic. Whether that rises to the level of adverse, yes, there will be more. It really impacts the overlook, which is a small residential component right here at the north, kind of like north-northwest corner of the property. But everybody else, all these other residential users back here are actually at or past, our traffic wouldn't be passing their front doors or passing their communities, per se, to access our community. Comment D was, in the staff's opinion, the applicant's rezoning proposal will result in a use that would cause excessive or burdensome use of existing streets, transportation facilities, et cetera. Again, as I said earlier, all streets and utilities internal to the development are going to be privately owned and maintained by the HOA. The external, obviously, things like Village Boulevard, Charles Hardy Parkway, Atlanta Highway, those are obviously going to remain public roads. And once again, I think commercial is going to have more of an impact on those kinds of facilities than the residential use. I'm going to flip E and F here. F is that, in the staff's opinion, that rezoning proposal is not in conformance with the 2022 comprehensive plan and associated Hiram Future Development map. The site is located within a commercial character area. That is true. We are obviously proposing this to go from commercial to residential. That is not consistent with the comprehensive plan. But, this kind of transfers me to the last comment, comment E, which is where I'm going to spend the majority of my time here. But, when it comes to comment E, staff's opinion, the rezoning request is not supported by newer existing, or changing conditions affecting uses and developments within the vicinity of the site. Commercial land uses have developed adjacent to and within the vicinity of the site. So, I believe the seller is here. They've had this property listed for commercial uses for some time, and it has not sold. There is a lot of commercial land out in this area that is either vacant, underdeveloped, or underutilized. There's the old, what is it? The Briar Patch BBQ. That's right on the corner of Charles Hardy Parkway and Atlanta Highway. That's sitting there vacant and has been sitting there vacant for probably the better part of 18 to 24 months, at least since we've been looking at this.
My understanding, it has been purchased.
Okay. And again, it's, there's a lot of commercial that's going on out here. We're also talking about 31 and a half acres. That's a large site, just to put that into context. If you look down the street to the east, at the Metro, what is it? The Metromont Shopping Center, and I'm taking about, I'm talking about like everything from the Ross's on the east to like Target on the west, Kohl's, there's a Kohl's, a Home Goods, all that in there. That entire parcel is about 30 acres, give or take. So we're talking about, if we're going to put, that's how much commercial could fit on a site this large. It's a lot of commercial, but you have a lot of those uses already within the area. You have Kroger, you have Kroger either three miles to the west, or like about five and a half miles to the east. You've got Costco just north of this site. Publix is just north of this site as well. Target, just mentioned, is in the Metromont Center. That's about two and a quarter miles down the street. Costco's a mile north of here. So, using this much space, this is a lot of commercial space, and there's also a lot of commercial space that exists elsewhere. And part of the reason that it exists elsewhere, and I know there's a gentleman from DOT here, but just looking at Georgia DOT, the traffic counts that exist on these roads, they're about, according to GDOT, GDOT data, there's about 32,000 cars a day out on Charles Hardy Parkway versus about 13,000 for Atlanta Highway. So about 250% more traffic, which is where the commercial is going to want to be. And we are preserving that commercial outlot on Charles Hardy Parkway, because that is the more desirable of the locations. Highway 278 has over 40,000 cars a day. So, is this a great commercial site? Probably not. There are better ones, right? It's contextual, and that's what these, you know, large commercial users, or even, you know, shopping centers are going to be looking for, is where am I going to see the most amount of traffic? This site, it sees a lot of traffic, 14,000 cars is nothing to sneeze at, but it certainly pales in comparison to some of the other very, very close proximity roadways that exist here, that just have higher traffic counts and are more desirable. So, with that, I'll say, I'll wrap up my presentation, answer any questions that anyone might have, but I know staff recommended a denial, but we would humbly request a reconsideration of that and rezoning it to R-55 residential to help support some of the additional commercial opportunities that can and will exist at some point in time in this area. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak in favor of this development? Come forward and sign in, please.
Sign in up here?
Yes, right there. There's a pad to your right.
Okay. Hi, guys. My name's Catherine Nagel. I'm a real estate agent that's working on this deal, but I'm here to speak on behalf of the Hunt family, Vera Hunt, Phil Hunt, and his sister Carolyn. They own part of the property. That's a long-paced road, kind of on the south part of this property, and he's not available to come due to health reasons, but he wanted me to just to come and just give his support on the development. As some of you may be aware, the Hunt family owned the whole parcel at one point, and they sold this off. And he just wanted me to come in support of it, because he's seen, you know, the property for a long point of time, and like, this has been tried to be developed a couple of times. I think that's tried a few times for different things, and he says that this, he thinks this is the best use of the property, because it's a senior use. He thinks it will reduce the traffic in the area, and he thinks that it would support other development in the area, because you're going to have, you know, rooftops, and you're going to have consumers that are going to be buying this, and it may help with the hospital close by, and it may help with other uses that are in the City of Hiram. And he just wanted me to come and just voice support on the behalf of the Hunt family.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
I've got questions of staff, but not to her.
Hold on, sir. We're not at that point yet.
You go ahead. We'll come back to staff.
No, go ahead and to staff.
So, I'll come back to staff. There may be other questions.
Are you in favor or against, sir?
Yeah, let him speak.
Okay, come forward. I thought you were against there. I'm sorry.
Good afternoon. My name is Edmund Ugu, and the pharmacist and owner of Gretel Pharmacy that's located adjacent to the property in question. So I'm coming here for two things, to support the development, because I believe it will help my business. Of course, I own a mom-and-pop business, and having that piece of land developed will go a long way to help our business out. Having said that, I also believe that it will provide more desired housing for older citizens. So the other reason that I'm here is that because I'm located very close to that property, and I built a pharmacy when nothing was there, so I had to provide certain infrastructure, one of which was to construct a sewer line that connects to the dialysis center that runs across the property. So, I had signed an easement agreement on what would happen if there's a development there, one of which is that I will have to connect to the sewer line instead of having a force main. And the other reason I also am here is to find out if, for this development or for future development, what kind of interconnectivity agreements that could exist between my property and this property. And I believe I sent this notification all across to the zoning department, and finally, I would also want to know how I would be able to have access to having an entrance into my pharmacy from Atlanta Highway. When I was building, I had this proposal that GDOT wanted me to embark on. I spent over $20,000 designing how we can have an entrance from Atlanta Highway. But eventually, the engineer representing GDOT has stated that it was not possible for me to have an entrance from Atlanta Highway, because I was too close to Pace Road. And he went ahead to state that I had to be 230 feet from Pace Road in order for that to happen. And then, 230 feet would put me right into the adjacent property. So, the gentleman was saying that the entrance would be through the Village Place behind Woodstock. That means that if that was to be the case...
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the applicant's 15 minutes is now, we're one minute over. So unless the, unless the planning commission desires to allow him to extend, that time is now concluded.
Do I have a motion to extend?
I make a motion to extend five more minutes for Mr. Ugu.
Yeah, I'm rounding up. So, my question is...
Do I have a second? Sir, do I have a second motion?
Our motion to extend for five minutes for Atlanta Highway. Thank you. Okay. Yeah, if you go ahead and ask your questions.
Yeah, so I might can help answer some of your questions with staff questions. So, let's take the first questions to the Planning and Zoning Department. Can you show us real quick where the pharmacy is with the mouse on here? I know about where it's at, but let's see which parcel it is, and then can you explain interconnectivity between stuff of what's required in development ordinance?
It's right in this area.
Okay. And would we have anything, when it comes through development, that would require interconnectivity between parcels?
There is a requirement on the overlay district on this one. We would encourage that these two may want to talk with each other.
But if it's required, and we do approve it for zoning, when it comes through plan review, developer needs to understand there may be an ordinance that directs them to provide interconnectivity. Possibly.
That is possible.
Okay.
And there is a part of the zoning that, the reason, I'm familiar where his driveway is, off of Pace Road, and due to the fact that he couldn't be 270 foot from Pace Road is the reason that they, you know, put him on.
Okay. Second question is, we changed or modified wording for some of the architectural requirements for PRD and R-55. Is that correct, a few months back?
In the county.
Okay, that's in the city, so it wouldn't apply.
This is in the city. City's R-55 district is a prior version of the county.
Okay. So it does, because the renderings, the renderings don't look like they meet our new requirements. That was alone.
They're under their old standards.
Okay.
And one thing, too, also, as well as still in our district, they're asking for a variant...
And one thing, too, also, as well as still in our district, they're asking for a variance. The, the R-55 limits the second store to 50% of the first floor, pretty much.
Okay.
And they're asking to expand that.
That's all I had.
I have a, I have a question for staff. Looking over the information from the applicant, it talks about 31.5 acres. Currently it's on B2 and R2, but then looking over staff comments, it's talking about proposed 31.5 acres from B2 to R-55. So I wanted a clarification on, are we talking about both R2 and B2, or is it just straight B2? And if it is both, can we get a breakdown of what the acreage, approximate acreage would be for that?
It's, it's my understanding that the property's 31.5 acres. Uh, I don't have exactly the, what is actually the R2 portion. The, the majority of the site is B2, and that was something that was on many years But they are asking to rezone, actually, I believe it was less than 31.5 acres to R-55, and remain an acre out here at the front along Charles Hardy Parkway. It's hard to see.
As far as, does anybody else have any other questions? I'd like to ask the road department, do you see any problems with using the Boulevard? Is it gonna be over excessive use of that Boulevard?
I don't know what the traffic count is on the Boulevard at this point in time. One of the stipulations that's included in here was the same one that was in the original zoning for this property back in 2001, which was to provide a traffic study to include all that information. We'll say that in the 2001 layout, they also showed in full access onto Atlanta Highway. Again, that would be something that would have to go through the Georgia Department of Transportation to be permitted. Same with this latest discussion of having emergency access onto Atlanta Highway, that's something that GDOT would have to oversee, who can permit.
I'd like to say that since it is, we just adopted the, the new future land use map back in '22, and, and I really don't like deviating a lot from it because the, we're getting a lot of houses, a lot of rooftops, and we're not getting very much commercial along with it to be able to support all these rooftops. So I like to stick with the future land use map as much as I, you know, can personally. Does anybody else have any other questions? Like, have the property owner come back? Oh, wait, we've got some more folks in the back. Come on up, ma'am, and...
Before, before we get into opposition, I would like to ask the applicant one more question.
Okay.
I don't know if this is opposition or if this is...
Ma'am, he wants to ask the...
Are you speaking in favor of or in opposition?
Well, I'm not in favor or opposed, but I have some questions about the traffic.
Okay, let's, let's talk to him first, and then we'll just have a secret out there, and we'll...
Yeah, let's go back to the Fisher representative. And you said it was Jason, and I don't think I caught the last name or spelled it correctly.
Wisniewski, but don't worry about it.
Okay. You said the property owner's here, so, and, and you read through all, you know, all of the bullet points, A through F. Understanding that we do do a comprehensive plan every five years, and that we do identify areas, and I do hear what you're saying from if something sits long enough and doesn't sell. I know the parcel, I know it's been for sale. How long has it been for sale listed as commercial? Do we know that answer?
I, I think Catherine probably does.
The developer's not here, but I talked to him this morning. He said it's been for sale for like 18 years, and it's been under contract three times for residential, the back portion. Also, just so you know, the front 1.4 acres is under contract for commercial right now.
That's all, that's all I have for you. I just was curious if we knew.
And I, believe me, I understand the notion of not wanting, you guys put in a ton of work into these plans, right? To go against it isn't what we necessarily wanna propose either, but it's also, we always don't, we aren't always part of that process, so we don't know how we arrived at this being commercial.
And then if you have one and you go against it, why do you have it to start with? So...
Let me ask you this. You've got the four zoning stipulations, or do you approve of those four?
I think I have questions about two of them. One, on number two, I'll start with number two. Agrees access to the development shall be determined during the plan review process. I'm not sure, I'm not sure if that, what that's referring to. Obviously, we're proposing access off of Village Boulevard, off of the roundabout. That's the access we're proposing. Is there some other access that I'm unaware of that, um, determined somewhere? I like, I'm not sure what that, exactly what that's referring to, because we proposed it as shown in the site plan, and...
Well, what will happen, I mean, you got, I mean, you're a land develop...
Yes.
Development guy for Fisher.
Yes.
I've done that as well, so...
You know how much fun this is then.
Absolutely. And, and you understand, too, that you, these are your preliminary concept plans. You'll submit for development review, you'll go through the county's permit process.
There's a whole permitting process that we need to go, I totally agree with that. So yes.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. The only other one that I, that, number one, I don't, I think we're showing a 75-foot buffer along Atlanta Highway right now. The topography in that area, just how the, the topography works, and I'm sorry, I don't have a cross-section, but Atlanta Highway is actually gonna be higher. It's gonna slope from Atlanta Highway towards Village Boulevard. That's the general topography of this site. So it's already going to, when we landscape in that 75-foot buffer along Atlanta Highway, you're gonna be, I mean, say a tree is anywhere from six feet, and I'm six, three, so like, somewhere roughly from my size to the, to the ceiling, right? Is what the landscape material along that's going to be, and our homes are gonna be below that. I just don't, like, the sound, the visual impact for residents is not, they're not gonna see those cars. Those cars will be above them, but I don't know what a 100 feet accomplishes. And again, if, if somebody had a, this is what we're trying to accomplish in 100 feet, that 75 can't, I'm all ears. I just think 75, that's the one stipulation where I, I don't understand what 100 feet does, that 75 feet will not accomplish for us. So, thank you. But otherwise, the, the other stipulations are...
So you disagree with number one, is what you're saying?
I disagree, sir, but I'm not gonna, there are swords to fall on and swords not to fall on. I would...
When your preliminary plan that you're showing here, did it take into account that 100 feet, or did it use...
It took 75.
75.
Yeah.
Do you know if the 75 will reduce your, your density?
It would.
And that's probably the bigger objection.
Sellers gotta get paid, so... I, I, again, if, if, I'm not gonna fall on that sword at 100 feet. I'm just saying, I think 75 is sufficient.
Thank you. Is there anyone in opposition to this zoning? Come on over, ma'am.
I'm with the Barrett Chase homeowners community. We're the HOA right off of the roundabout, so we're the ones that own that roundabout and take care of the streets, et cetera.
In the purple, what you're talking about there?
Yes, in the purple. No, not Springfield, no, we're Barrett Chase, so we're...
Oh, Doug wants to throw their cards.
There's 334 houses in Barrett Chase. After the, at the roundabout, that's our only way to get out for 238 homes. So that, that entrance at that, exit at the roundabout for 238 homes is the only exit. There was supposed to be another exit on Misty Court when the development was first developed, but they closed it, or they just never opened it. I think they said it was a problem with it being too close to the elementary school or something, maybe, too much traffic. But the problem is, we have a bus stop on Village Circle, or right there at the Circle, and that bus is gonna block all those 238 houses that come out. It's also gonna block everything coming out of the new development. So three times a day, twice a day, everybody's blocked from getting out. It's dangerous. We would have to have another entrance exit if we were gonna invite another 117 homes to the area. And then we would also, if it gets approved, want a construction easement with the developers so that we can get our streets repaired and all of that.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all.
Anyone else? Yes, sir, come up. Sign in on my pad to your right, and state your name.
Hello, everybody. My name is Tony Tinksley. I'm a Realtor. I live in the Crescent Development. I have a suggestion for your land person. There is a, it's kinda like a divide between that, that furniture store. If he cuts through, that we wouldn't have any traffic problems. There's nothing there. It's literally the large trash can to the back of just where he's gonna develop. If he cuts through, we wouldn't have an issue. That was my issue as well, 'cause my daughter, who's now going to the eighth grade, is gonna be catching the bus, and let's be honest, most of us live and work outside where we live, so, you know, coming home, we're gonna be stuck in traffic, and we, 20 feet to our house, but we can't get there because he's got some large trucks. That is gonna get a little frustrating. So maybe he can work something out with that commercial unit and just cut right through, and we won't have an issue. But I mean, to be honest, I'm all for it, because Fisher does make great homes, and the price and values will go up, and there goes the value of my home. So I'll be able to sell it, absolutely.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Say it, none?
Let's go back to answer both of their questions real quick. You can do that, again, with number two in the stipulations, where they will look at the accesses when it comes through for, for permitting, if it's, if it's passed and approved. Mr. Jones of DOT, quick question. Is Village Circle, Village Boulevard, are those county-owned roads, or is it private roads?
We can see Hiram for a portion of it, and then it's private for a portion of it.
Just curious.
Would that be in private? See, it could be a real burden, like she, like she's talking about, as far as the kids getting out of school. That could be a serious safety issue. Anyone else against this zoning?
I just wanna, we're not against it, we just want to make sure if there's no...
Ma'am, ma'am, come on back up where I can hear you.
Sorry. I didn't want you to get confused. Barrett Chase is not against the development.
We just wanna make sure that we have a safety, another entrance or exit out of our community for safety reasons, and because that bus stop completely blocks traffic for 238 homes. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Hear none? Would anyone need to ask questions of the developer for him?
Well, just make a statement.
I'd like to ask a question about this variance. Mr. Robson, what about this variance? That's quite a variance from what we stated in our requirements, is it not, about the second floor? I mean, how many more people will that add to their, their living there? Maybe I should ask the, the applicant, but that's quite a difference from what we have in our requirements, is it not?
All right. The, the R-55 district, under Architectural and Landscape Standards, this is a, uh, single-family detached and attached cottage dwelling shall contain a master bedroom and bath on the main floor, which they do on this proposal. Second-story living square footage may not exceed 50% of the main level heated square footage. And they're asking to, I believe it was...
76%.
Yes.
For 60% of the units.
That's correct.
Would that not be a question as far as City of Hiram, since their zoning is a little bit different from ours?
To, it would be if they choose to approve this, that they would also have to choose to approve that...
The variance.
That variance of that, that standard.
Is it, is the, the two-story units, I mean, is this all fee simple? I mean, is Fisher selling these units? So if I purchased one, I'm buying the first and second floor. It's not leased to one, leased to another, like a retirement community might be.
I'm not sure these are going to be over 30 feet in height, but if any units that are 30 feet in height require elevator.
Say that one more time.
Any, any of the units that are 30 feet in height, structures over 30 feet in height are required, are required to have elevators.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? Hear none, do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to deny.
Motion by...
Second.
Mr. Aston, deny, second, by Ms. Fitzgerald. All in favor? Unanimous will be four, five, zero, and one. Does anyone have anything else they wanna bring up?
Mr. Chairman, zoning case 2427Z of Serenity Partners. That application will be, your recommendation will be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners for their August 13th regular meeting at 2:00 PM that day.
Be August 13th, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to, to advise the commission that the first applicant, whose case was dismissed without prejudice, has actually arrived. However, the problem is, in the event there were any citizens or people in favor or opposed, once you voted to dismiss that without prejudice, they may have left the room, and so I would not recommend retaking that back up, because there will be a, a legal deficiency at that point, because the members of the public that may have come to speak in opposition to the proposal have left, to the extent there were any. I don't know whether there were any or not, but the applicant was supposed to be present at 2:00, and that's what can happen. So I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Thank you.
We'll speak with the applicant after the meeting about what to do next.
Okay, thank you. All right. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, by Mr. Steele. Second by Mr. Callahan. All in favor? Five, zero, and one. Thank you for coming today, and have a good day.